All right. We will open the -- oh, you need a couple of seconds. All right, we're live. So, welcome to the village treasurer board meeting November fourteenth. It is seven o'clock. We're going to get started with the pledge. Jake?
Why do I just tell it? United States of America, in two republics with all its chains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we will open up the public comments section. Please keep your comments to five minutes. And state your name and address.
Peter Elder, 59 Dunning Avenue. I just wanted to come up here and thank the village for once again supporting the trick-or-treat trail and costume contest. So, I got my orange on. So, I, but I, but you know, I have to take this lightly, but this was probably one of our best attended trick-or-treat trails ever. We were probably running well over fifteen hundred people, or children, out there. And so, you know, it's really the support of the bid, but also the support of you guys that allows that to happen. So, I want to again, thank you for doing that. I, no, over here, my job is to go around and sign up merchants, and we had the most this year. We were just over sixty-five, something like that. And we had a couple of people that signed on at the very end, but we had, we had really great participation by the merchants. I know some of them were shocked at how much candy they were giving out, but it was, but it was really great on that score. And I honestly did not see the wagon with no people on it. Maybe at the very end, Jake was there the whole time, standing up. I got a great picture of you, by the way. Getting people on and off of the wagon, and I've never seen it that full for that long. And there were people everywhere. So, I, again, it's just, it's a great event. I'm really happy that you decided to keep supporting it, and really happy the bid supported it. I did want to let you know that even though we didn't get a lot of dog people, I said that wrong, people with dogs, actually, meeting over at, meeting over at Village Hall, well, my son was back from Chronicle, because he's in the Marines, and he took his leave at that time. So, we went through the crowd and found people with dogs that were having costumes on, and we actually awarded them as walking through the crowd. So, I think we're going to keep doing that, because it was very successful, and people liked getting random gift cards. Who would have guessed? So, anyway, so the, so it was really, was really good. So, again, I want to thank you for everything you do to make that happen. I want to thank my wife, because she actually did a lot of the sign-ups for the merchants too, so, but it's just a great event. So, next, my Christmas is coming up, I think, on the first Saturday in December. Okay? All right, well anyways, thank you very much.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, thank you for your support.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else this evening? All right, so we'll close the open section and move on to village business. So, we're looking for a resolution to approve the village board meeting minutes from October twenty-fourth. Does anyone get a chance to review?
Yeah.
Any questions, suggested changes?
No.
Nothing?
We're down on Facebook. The computer crashed. Says there's low memory, so bear with me. Keep continuing, just do not lie.
I would announce it, but nobody would hear it.
I know. That's why I'm just letting you know.
Jim Clancy?
Yes, here you go.
All right, Jim, we're live. All right, so if no one has any changes to this, ask for a motion to approve the October twenty-fourth village board meeting minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Heather, you can take a stab at that one.
Trustee Melcay?
Aye.
Trustee, uh, trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Sorry, messed me up. Trustee Lindsay?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Approve the claims and warrants. Leave Al and Carlin through them this evening. Do you have any questions?
Yeah. Jake, I have one. Fort Miller Corp.
One page.
That would be page two. That's the, the impeller, and bushing, and burying, and, or I think the leaf machine?
Yeah, that's, that was our old relief machine that was ordered prior to our obtaining the newer leaf machine.
Is there any way we can get somebody more local, instead of Skylerville? I see there's like a $200 freight charge for the parts, isn't it?
No, that's, that's where we have to get it fixed. We ordered it because typically in the past, it's something like that, one of the bearings or the impeller. I've had to drive to, it's actually in Greenwich, outside of Saratoga Springs, I usually leave early, drive there, so when I miss one day, it leaves picked up instead of, instead of a couple. And that's, that's, it's a sole source, it's a custom-made machine, so, I mean, not just custom-made for us, but they make them, and they supply all the parts.
Okay.
I think you're right, Charlie.
And a same, similar question, Northeast Sweepers, the sweeper repair, do they got to come out of New Jersey, or do they have any type of thing?
Well, they, they do, there's a local repair person now that they're, that they're working with, but their headquarters is in New Jersey, really. So, sometimes when they get the guys up here, and they have them, you know, they've, they've been, these machines have been in the country for about twenty years. Built and had one, they're the only ones around this area. Primarily, they're down along the east coast, so there's a sweeper company here that teamed up with one here, with Northeast Sweepers and Spesial Proprietary Services, they kind of teamed up, they were upstate sweepers, I think is what that was called, and they were kind of working together. So, they're kind of making, but there's not a lot of them up there still, so they're making a satellite, kind of, kind of a satellite of that New Jersey shop up here, so that they can service the sweepers and expand the market in the New Jersey area.
I just wondered, there's on the bank card here on page two, too, what just, what is, what kind of breakdown is that on, on the first bank card? What are they? Just a general, that's right there on page two.
Yeah, they had all the receipts on there.
Yeah, and I don't know.
Well, nineteen eighty-nine, eight hundred, that's clothing line, so it's probably something that came out of where somebody was reimbursed.
Oh, it's clothing, okay. So, if I just look it up that way?
Yeah, seventy-one forty's park, or, excuse me, side long stripes, seventy-one? No, that's parks.
That wasn't credit, anyway.
Oh, perfect.
No, okay, so if I look it up by that, then I can figure out.
What's fifty-one twelve?
Fifty-one twelve streets, and four-twenty is a repair line, operation, maintenance of equipment. So, any of them that ended in four-twenty are operation, maintenance of equipment.
Okay.
So, one of them streets, eighty-one seventy, street cleaning.
Okay.
Thirteen twenty-five is a clerk line.
All right, that's all. Thanks. All right. What's the burner, on page four, what's a burner rebuild?
That's for oil burner, waste oil burner in the shop.
Oh, oh, I know.
Yeah, delivery earlier.
Okay.
Well, every other year, actually.
Just out of curiosity, that's Park Water Service.
They have spring filters, aren't they?
Yeah, we have spring filters from over there.
Yeah.
Somebody's drinking a lot of water.
Or sledgehawling.
Fifty of that.
Sledgehawling.
Anything else?
So, very good questions, Tom, board.
Sewer charge. Oh, yeah.
Why clinic?
Oh, I saw the, oh, bam, 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 bam.
Wow.
That is one of these. It's a hundred and twenty-five bucks an hour?
Yeah.
Did pay for the meeting? All right, so I will ask for a motion to approve the claims and warrants.
I'll make that motion.
Wow.
I'll second it.
Trustee Lindsay?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Melcay?
Aye.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
All right, so did everyone get the chance to look at the financial statements? Year-to-date here.
I was thinking on the brick sales, we should maybe do some big advertising before Veterans Day.
Think we could utilize the gentleman behind the camera?
What's that?
To local switch some of that.
Yeah, um, the brick sales, we have for veterans down there, and maybe we can put something together before, um, November eleventh, Veterans Day.
Oh, you mean?
Just some kind of a promotion, promotion.
Next year you're talking.
Yeah, yeah, it's gone.
Yeah, because it already happened, so we were saying just to give.
We could this year, but it wouldn't make.
When is there another time that you're doing something like that throughout the year? Is it the only time?
Memorial Day?
That you do every day.
Memorial Day too, Memorial Day and, uh, November eleventh.
Probably not enough time for Memorial Day, even if you, I mean, maybe if you start it now.
I know, that's right.
Because it takes so long to get him, to get him engraved, and usually I think he waits for.
What kind of timeframe do you have, Jake?
Sometimes, I think depending on how many monuments he has to do.
Yeah, because.
It's, it's, you can get him, you know, a couple of weeks, and sometimes it's four or five weeks a night, and sometimes you might wait, we have a few and send them over, and so it kind of varies, but I think it's, uh.
Well, okay, then we've got enough time to call him.
It also makes a difference where you're trying to recognize, too, because if you're trying to recognize Memorial Day, that's past, and the people we lost, if you're trying to recognize Veterans Day, that's present and retired, that's a lie. So, there's two different recognitions, and a lot of people get it confused. So, if you're putting a brick with someone's name that's still alive, you don't want to do it on Memorial Day.
Right. But that'll be all the advertising.
Like, that person might take offense to it.
That is how a great person is going to advertise.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I guess you could do it for both. You could start the advertising now for both.
Well, that's kind of, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
I don't know if it was a good, bad idea, but I.
Are we back up on Facebook?
No, it's the computer, not Facebook.
Oh, my kids were watching.
The fan's running hard, it seems like it's overheating, I don't know what's going on, and I'm trying to figure that out.
Is that ours?
Yeah. I don't know, I think it needs an update.
We've been saying that.
Uh, yeah, maybe the updates were caused it then, maybe the system.
It was, we've had issues when we're not doing updates, it literally sat open all day yesterday, and today doing the updates.
Yeah.
All right. So, next, we'll be looking for a resolution for the village treasurer to purchase a check scanner from Canadawood National Bank, and the amount not to exceed six hundred dollars.
Well, guys, we didn't have an exact amount, I did include our email chain.
I saw the email.
Okay.
So, what does this do?
This will help us, um, this will help us during tax time, we get a lot of checks, and a lot of time we have to go to the bank, and we're there for like forty-five minutes, and the check scanner's right there, so this way, we would get the money deposited right away. And we're in our office.
So, isn't that a good price? I have no idea, I'm watching check.
Yeah, we're going to get refurbished, and Canadawood National Bank has done, been nice enough to do the light work for us and get us a good price.
A good price.
We think it's actually going to be a lot less than six hundred, but it might be like five, oh, two.
Yeah, no, the match is six, that is not a good.
Okay.
Good investment, I think.
It's a dual scanner, so it, those do cost a little bit more than the single ones, but we can, when we have seventy-five checks or two-fifty in a day from tax time, I can mentally help.
All right, so, you have an issue with this?
I, yeah.
You do?
What?
I asked if you had an issue with it.
Oh, no, 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 I didn't, I thought you were okay with this. I'm, yeah, it's the code, and the sign is.
And this comes out of the office budget line? Obviously, there's funds for that, isn't it?
Yes, we do have to do a bunch of applications, but, you know, we're doing them once a month now, instead of doing it every time.
Okay. All right, if the funds are there, ask for a motion to authorize the village treasurer to purchase a check scanner not to exceed six hundred.
Yeah, motion.
Trustee Lindsay?
Aye.
Trustee Melcay?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
All right, so this, we're going to be looking to get an authorization for Mayor Byers, Byers or his designated, so.
Yes, designated.
I think that could be me?
Yes, it could be you.
To, for an easement agreement. Why I'm confused is it says easement agreement for forty-eight South, but on easement agreement, it says forty-nine South, so I'm not sure which address it is. It's forty-nine.
Yeah.
Okay. So, really what I'm looking for, you guys, if you review this, is a, just a resolution to approve, so there'll be egress, ingress and egress through this forty-nine South Avenue.
Well, actually, it's just for a small fifteen-foot by thirteen-foot parcel at the rear of forty-nine South Avenue. The village owns the property, the bus, the rear.
Fifteen feet of an easement.
The rear parking lot. So, that, um, this, this was so that Ed Alcavella, that owns the business that operates out of there. Sometimes he gets, um, box trucks that, for his delivery, he like sells those sound equipment and stuff, and, and now they some, they have to either back up or getting in and out on, on the South Avenue, at times can be difficult. So, this way, they can just swing around through the bag.
Yep.
Ed also offered, and this isn't really part of the easement, just in case you see that a tree comes down, there's a, there's a tree right next, it's not in the easement, but it's right next to it, and it's kind of a scrub, scrubby, ugly tree.
It's a nutty tree, yeah, it is.
He, he, I, I think he's going to take that down, and, and he also is going to clean up the berm back there, that's kind of overgrown with.
Yeah, it's pretty nasty there.
Webster Baptist, all right with that?
Well, it's technically, the berm is owned by the village, so the church, the church technically has no say in that.
No.
But it's going to clean it up, why would they object?
Exactly.
We'll see them object.
We're talking about the next trustee meeting, so.
And we had a previous conversation regarding this, anyway, so this is just the easement, so. Does anyone have any other questions or concerns?
Nope.
I think it took that idea. Yeah.
So, now, ask for a motion for myself to sign.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
So, I'll have a copy for me and sign that, just. Perfect.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Melcay?
Aye.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay?
Aye.
Technically, you should vote last, before it pushes around.
Okay. Is that your direction? All right, so now we're having a discussion on proposed local law and change the village code as it pertains to parking in and in the village. So, I think, Jacob, I'm sure you'd want to give us a little more background.
Oh, yeah, we're just looking to clarify, there's been, I guess recently, some confusion and scratching of what was always been a lot of the past, and, and generally, uh, done in village parking lots. You know, we had, you know, big food trucks parked there, and RV parked there, we had someone drop off a boat, and it was going to leave it there till April. We wanted to clarify and make sure this, our code reads, follows the definition of vehicle, a vehicle in traffic law, and there's some confusion there, when it goes to enforcement, because a trailer is something that can be drawn up on the highway, and it's considered a vehicle, so as long as it's registered, you could leave a trailer parked there for seventy-two hours. I don't think that's the intent, nor is, you know, parking an RV that's twice as long as the parking spot that it's in, or, you know, other things. So, we wanted to clarify, just make sure everybody's on the same page. What we attempted to do in this is to, you know, just say that, you know, it's got to fit within the spot, and I think it's really common sense of, it's got to fit within the lines, and it can't extend past it, and it's got to, if there's a, if you have a vehicle, so you pull up there with your boat, you can park it across two parking spaces, because it's longer than one, but you can't leave a trailer parked there not connected to a vehicle at any time. But if there's another vehicle there, it discusses parking that. You know, a trailer, towed, you can go up there and park it, but it can't be there between like two AM and six AM. And again, and it's, it's one of the things, you know, certain times of the year, it's a lot more important than others. But, you know, that's, we have something in there, so that's something that's going to be really easy and obvious to see that, you know, that's extending past those times. We know we don't have to wait to seventy-two hours, we don't have to, you know, so we can take it from, you know, parking spot A, park there for seventy-one and a half hours, and we'll get to parking spot B, and then this time starts over again, and that gets, that makes it challenging sometimes.
Um, that sounds.
Who checks?
He does.
Okay, who checks it, the parking, the seventy-two hours?
Jake goes out there. No, it's, it's got to be, you know, we've got to call it in, and typically, the police now, when, will put like an orange tag or sticker on there, and make an observation, I'm sure make notes, and then go back, and if it's not moved, then they'll, they'll be able to ticket the vehicle, whether it's towed or vehicle.
No, they have a system.
Clarify it.
Yeah.
So, this is, um, this is just stating a discussion, but I see this is a, this is a motion, so.
Well, I think there's a motion to set a public hearing for it.
Okay.
Because, you know, with the locals, you have to do the public hearing, and publish the public hearing and all those. So, I don't know if the public hearing is in here next, or.
It's.
Don had directed me, because he didn't have a chance to review it yet, so he wanted to review it.
The last sentence of the meeting, if you got any minimum violation, the village may have the vehicle removed, but, but I think you should say indoor trailers, so, otherwise you can't tow away the trailers. Trailer has its, has its own definition, the vehicle in traffic law.
Yeah, well, no, in vehicle in traffic law, trailer is a vehicle, but I appreciate what you're saying about having it in there, it's really clear.
It has a, it's a vehicle, but it's a vehicle not propelled by its own power.
Right.
Right.
Right, that's a good bridge.
So.
That makes sense.
But you still, if somebody's just got a trailer parked there, you get into an argument whether it's a vehicle or not, and.
And I would.
Okay, that's a good, good point.
Oh, do you have it? I did print it out.
I thought you wanted to review it.
Also, you're going to make more, you're going to make those changes.
That's okay, you got to follow this, you know, this would be local law number four.
Yes. If you want to go ahead and pass such a public hearing with the changes made, we can do that.
Um, so, whenever you need to do the public hearing.
We should probably do, do both the same night, just different times. So, maybe that means enough time.
We should have.
Well, I would probably do it ninth of November twenty-sixth, probably with December twelfth meeting.
December twelfth, that's.
This one, this one's a little different than, because this is not a zoning local law, you don't need ten days, it doesn't have to have ten days notice for publication, actually, just five days is sufficient, but, so, as long as it's in the Webster Herald, at least five days before December twelfth. I think Jake did prepare the notice and cover it in the paper.
Yes, my four and the team to review.
Yeah, they were both okay. They just, you just need to put in, he had an XX instead of the four, because we weren't sure which local law it was, so you just got to put in local law number four and today's date for the resolution, and the public hearing on December twelfth.
Five days before, will the other one be ten days?
The other one has to be, you know, it has to be in the Herald at least ten days before.
So, do we say the twelfth will work for both of these?
The twelfth should work for, for both of them, because say that's, you know, it's almost four weeks from now. You know, when you get down to number, number ten, you can have this, both public hearings on, on the twelfth.
I may apologize, that was not sent out to you until today, because I just got it today.
All right, that's fine, so we'll all meet on number ten, and we'll just do both?
Yeah.
All right, so next, you guys, see as we looking for a resolution to authorize salary increases for deputy clerk to forty-eight thousand six seven fourteen, and office clerk two to thirty-nine thousand.
I'm sorry, I missed what you wanted, to go on the public hearing together with item ten?
Item ten was a suggestion from our attorney.
Okay, thank you.
So, thoughts?
Are they due already, or is it?
Heather sent yesterday the reviews that she had put together, so there was some email exchange that had forth regarding that process a little bit.
Well, I mentioned it a couple of weeks ago, and Daryl and I have had several meetings.
I thought we had touched on it, did we?
Yeah, well, there's no question we talked about, I think what came out of that meeting was I, I said that, not against it, but when you give raises, I think there should be some sort of documentation to support that, and we just received, I just received that a day or so ago.
Well, and the difference is that I, yes, I realize that it was, the objectives are for the future, but this one, we had talked about because of the good work they did after we had, like, over treasurer, and it was our first review, and since they had never received one, generally, there is an incentive to have a review, our first one, and this is only a one-time thing, was what Daryl specified. So, it wasn't so much that, you know, yes, it wasn't, we need a whole year to complete it, I understand that, but it was, they did a really good job with this whole process and transition, and as a first review, which is generally what happens, they would get a type of incentive. So, it was just like that.
What is the percentage of the increase?
The, so, it's just one point five percent for, for Joe, the other one is not, that's a little bit higher, but.
So, that's my concern, is like, who are you basing that on?
Daryl had said. Um, we had, Mayor Byers and I had discussed that, and I did send out an email today, because I, I didn't realize that you hadn't heard about it yet, but.
And then you talked about issue two, a not given.
Um, Mayor Byers and I discussed, as Megan was thinking about leaving, because she just, there's not a lot of room for growth in our office, and this is coming from her mouth. She told me this, it's not that she's not happy, she just, you know, and we love her, we want her to stay, so Daryl and I discussed, you know, it would be really nice to change the position, to make it, and I actually talked to Jake about this too, changing the position to an assistant deputy clerk, assistant deputy treasurer, instead of just an office clerk, and putting ownership on it, and making it a long-term position, not just someone that, you know, think, hey, you're just in the door, and then you go somewhere else, not like a jumping off.
She does so much, though, it's for everyone.
Yeah, people think of it as something, that's how it is in other government offices too.
But I mean, she really does, she does a piece of, of every bit of the job here.
She's really not just an office clerk, she really is a payroll clerk. She does, she assists me, she assists Joe, she assists the treasurer, she's already doing all of these things.
And if she's doing a lot of things that are typically in the job description, then we look at the job description.
Exactly.
And make changes to it, but I don't think it's, we should be stating that, well, she's, she's saying she's going to leave, so now we're going to go to the table, change the position and give her more money. You negotiated the front, not the middle, and.
This is what I was told to do.
Well, I understand, but this is not the second, this is more than once we've heard that, so this same person was leaving, and that's not a good approach, to just throw money at someone.
Well, no, you've got to have way more discussion than, than.
Right, but if, you just got to be careful, you know?
No, I understand.
Then, then you set a precedence for any other person that wants to say, hey, leave, and then we're going to say, oh.
I understand.
I like changing, I like changing, but she does. Because she does do it, she does, and she's, she's so good at what she does.
And I'm not saying you're not, and I think this year.
I understand, and I understand what you're saying.
Right, this year, we need to, you really have to.
Tighten.
Tighten the process around, you know, so they mean exceed the objectives. Everyone's just doing a good job of what they do, that's what everyone's supposed to do, you know, so, yeah.
I know, but the other thing that's hard in our office is that we don't really have projects that are happening, we just, we, their things are very nonchalant, it's the same thing every day, so it is kind of hard to.
I'll work with it, there's a very creative.
I work in attorney stuff, and John would tell me how bad.
There's very creative ways to sit in a meeting and see where, where everyone can do better, where can we grow, how can we be more efficient, where can we save money, those can be all of gems. Those can all be objectives.
Well, and then, we are fixing a problem that happened with the previous administration. So it had been, the women were torn apart, and the guys in the back were torn apart. So, it's getting fixed.
So, no, I just looked to see if he had a response to that. All right, so.
In addition, if I could, um, there's also been some talk about Megan also helping Will and Jake in the back as well.
He been part of that conversation, sir?
Yes, no, I was.
She talks about it, I've just found out, but it's actually a good idea. I had suggested that she could be, help out with co-enforcement, I mean, she's very bright, and she, I think it would be great.
Heather, are you mic up? Can you bring that up?
It's tough to hear you.
So, so it seems like everyone's in favor, and like I said, I'm not, not, I'm not against it, I just, I just don't like how it's, basically how it all came down, how it was presented, and everything. And then maybe there has to be, if, if this is true, or there's a concern of the office in the back of the house that Judy alluded to, then maybe we, maybe we gotta have some sort of monthly or quarterly meeting, if there's that much that's going on, that.
I don't think there's that much that's going on, I think a lot of it has gotten cleared up, but it was divided previously. And the people that are working there now, that weren't there 10 years ago, don't understand how we worked together before. We had all different personalities, and everybody still worked together. And we just want to get that all back again, so, that's really what I'm trying to say.
All right, so. So I guess we're, we're gonna ask for a resolution for these increases, and that, you know, that it isn't gonna be this easy next time, because there's not a clear process of.
Yes.
I mean, because we should have there been support whatever.
Well, and it should know, we all should know something about 29,000.
And the objectives for Megan, then, we would include doing PPW work and Will's work, and what the goals are for doing that.
Yeah, we're gonna look at the office, maybe one day or one afternoon back there, where Jake has projects. He, he already comes up and asks me all the time, you know, can I borrow Megan, and we, of course, she's great at it, so we always have a great relationship when it comes to that, she's already doing it, she's already, and I should've, I should've thought of this earlier, but I didn't, so I apologize.
So I got one question for you then, so, so there's, these are increases, and nothing, and this resolution talks about these position, title change, or job suspension.
I didn't get a chance to talk to you about it, and I didn't realize.
No, 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 let me finish, so I'm asking, so, so when that happens, are we talking about, I want more money?
No.
Because this has changed.
And they're also, no, this is because of that, and I did find out from civil service that we're able to just slide her in, and she'll be salary now, so she won't be hourly, so there will be no overtime or anything. And in addition to that, um, what? I thought you were looking at Jake.
No, I think he's looking this way, and I'm looking this way, because you're speaking.
There won't be, that whatever the raise is that's decided next year will not happen for Megan. Like, she's already getting more than, so that was what Daryl and I discussed, and I thought.
I don't know if we have a discussion.
Because it is a big jump.
What was the percentage of the 700?
Well, it was 1.5 for, for Joe, which is $700, it's very small. For, for Megan, it was a little bit more like, I think, was it 3.5%? It was just a number that Daryl and, Daryl and I had put out.
I hate to be a bad guy here, but wouldn't it make sense to, to have a similar, and then put her in this new role, title change, and then, so she jumps on the track with everybody next time, and so we can see what she does in the role right here.
But she's already doing it, so, she's been doing it, it just wasn't in that title. She does help him, but I'm saying she was actually gonna go back there and help, and have her little spot back there, help him with whatever he needs. So she, but she already is doing this stuff, and she's been doing it for two years, so she probably should've had this title a long time ago.
All right. I just wish, you know, we were involved in this decision, instead of you and Daryl.
Well, you have to remember that it's my job to talk to you, and.
No, I understand, but you granted this, this meeting.
Which I did, I, I.
I'm not saying you didn't bring this, but the whole thing about changing the title and all this stuff.
Which it just happened, and I apologize for that, I apologize, but.
No, well, this, you just said you did research and called, called and got information, and you could just slide her in.
Yeah, I mean, the last couple of weeks, I think, and I'm not gonna say this, we're on camera right now. I had asked someone to.
Thanks for reminding me.
I had asked someone to talk to you all, which is not.
It didn't just discuss, is that's the hold, and that is been a problem for that few months, not being discussed by, with everyone, regardless of changes.
All right, so I guess I'm gonna ask for a resolution, or a motion, I should say, to authorize a salary increase for deputy clerk in the office clerk two. Can I have a start date for this, effective, when is it effective?
When's the next payroll period? That's when it should be effective.
Yeah, the effective next payroll.
So I said the next payroll period.
Yeah, which is next Monday.
Well, we got our checks tomorrow, which, these were in our first week of the next payroll cycle, so it's the end of the following week, because that's one, right, right, it's two, every two weeks.
Just give me a date. Exactly, I just wanted to factor it in.
Well, it, it should be whenever the next payroll period is. It sounds, it's probably not this Monday, it's probably a week from Monday. Because otherwise, you'll over.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to get at.
For another half, for another week of this raise, and it's just, it's easier if it just kicks in at the beginning of a payroll period.
All right, so this will take place the next payroll, beginning of the next payroll period. Got any tears? Jude? I asked for a motion.
Oh, I, I will make that motion, sir.
Aye.
I'll second that.
All right.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Monkey?
Aye.
Trustee Lower?
Aye.
Trustee Ableton?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, so next, we're gonna be looking for a resolution for Mayor Byers, or does it need to sign Village eligible for 457B Deferred Compensation Plan and Trust for Governmental Entities and Adoptors Agreement. So who's got some background on this?
So, we currently don't offer a Roth 457, and I had one in Monroe County at my last job, and we had no way to transfer my money over, because we did not have a 457 Roth. So Legend actually found out that they can offer it, and so they want to offer it to everybody, so they asked us to redo our agreement again.
So, so really, the only thing, the only change is, if you look on the third page, number 14, now it's got an X under Roth deferred.
Oh, okay.
Before that was never X, so.
Oh, thank you.
So now you can, essentially, it's like a Roth IRA.
Okay, I read through the whole thing, and I'm going, okay, what's the difference?
That's the only change, really.
Okay, thank you.
The Dally can set up a Roth, you know, so that it's not pre-tax money, it's after-tax money.
Makes sense.
That goes into.
And a, um, a 457 is, it's better, it's supposed to be better for government employees, so it's nice if we're operating this now.
Yeah, because I love to do it like.
Before, they'd have to go put into a private IRA.
All right, someone ask for a motion?
I'll make a motion for myself, I'll second it.
Trustee Monkey?
Aye.
Trustee Lower?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Ableton?
Aye.
Thank you, Dan.
All right, so we're also now going to be looking for a resolution to authorize changes to policies now, section E4 and E-14, weekend duty and snow watch policy. As you saw, Don made changes to it, and everything.
I sent them to Jake, and Jake looked it over, and he just added, um, a little clarification on that, at the end of the snow watch policies, for which weekends, the superintendent of public works will be paid for snow watch duty. And then I just, I gave you a little background of what the town does, you know, so, I don't know about other villages, but this kind of thing doesn't happen for free, so. So I don't, in my view, $30 a day is pretty.
No, hey, yeah. There'd be a number of.
Because if someone, someone has to do it, and if not Jake, then you gotta pay someone to do it.
Trustee, we vote him every week. If you like the timing. He gets three minutes a week.
I haven't seen him in about two months.
Yeah, yes, right.
So does anyone have any concerns how it's rewritten, everything looks good?
No, I think, um, it's fine.
All right.
It's better.
Yeah, and after, um.
It is better.
Further discussions that I've had, I, I also concur with Tom, that I don't think that is unreasonable. So, I'm going to ask for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Does it make the.
One second.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Monkey?
Aye.
Trustee Lower?
Aye.
Trustee Ableton?
Aye. All right, Don, you want number 10?
Oh, yeah.
Sure. Just going back to the, the policy, so someone has to make sure that it actually gets put in the policy manuals. The old ones thrown up.
Jake, the heat works really good in here. Holy smokes.
Well, the next one is the, you know, I mentioned last meeting, I think last night, that the zoning board of appeals was, was interested in amending the zoning code to allow sheds larger than 100 square feet, which is the, which is what is allowed now by the code, because I get so many applications for variances, that it's like the exceptions are swallowing the rule at this point. So, um, the proposed change is, is in red there. Essentially, you can end up with a shed anywhere between 120 square feet and 192 square feet, and you don't need a variance. And then the other section is, if you looked at section 175-77A, the fourth and fifth sentences, just delete those. That's, those are the two sentences that require every zoning board of appeal, appeal, or application, to first go to the planning board, which, nine times out of 10, is just a waste of everybody's time. So we'll just take that right out of the code, and then the zoning board could just, if they ever wanted to refer something to the planning board, they could do that on their own, but if it was like some big project that was looking for a bunch of variances, or something like that, but for every single time, it, you know, so those are the two changes, so, um, wherever the, wherever the resolution is for, um, the, here we go.
The local.
To set, to set the public hearing, um, you can kind of make it plural, to include, um, you know, set the public hearing, you know, for, for this local law, um, this one's three, and for local law four, which is the, the parking change, and have them both on the 12th.
12th and 13th, yeah.
So you don't necessarily need to read the entire resolution, it's basically just, you know, take a, take a motion to set the public hearing for both local laws, number three and four, for December 12th. You probably should stagger them, one to start at 7:15, and the other one at 7:30, or something like that.
All right, so I'm gonna ask for a motion to set a public hearing for local law three and four, for December 12th. Um, we will discuss, um, the sheds at 7:15 and the other at 7:30.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then Heather will still publish the two separate conferences.
Yes.
So Don, it's back to you.
I don't think I have anything. We talked about parking, and you mentioned the public, how Ed helped us clean up that burn. If you could sign that easement.
Yeah, I think that's something that you should miss.
I don't know, I don't know where the asphalt plants are with the snow we've had, but that, that's goal is to see if you could try to squeeze it in before they close this year, which might already happen.
Yeah, he might, he might be in trouble.
Yeah.
Yeah, in which case, he's gotta wait till the sprint, till they reopen to do it, but. So I, I told him that we would, you know, the easement would be presented tonight, and as long as that went through, that Jake could contact him, and tell him he's got his approvals, and he could get it done this, um, this season. So that's, that would, he wanted to try to do that. It's gotta be ordered, I can order it, is it fine? You don't worry. Don't get much trouble. So I, I don't have anything other than that.
Okay.
You should have trouble with that, in the Department of Public Works.
Well, I had three nights for me and Jake.
Yeah.
Jake's gotta talk to them.
Okay, that'd be great.
All right, Department of Public Works, Jake?
The burning question, I'm sure everybody will have, once the snow melts and they become visible again, is, are leaves gonna get picked up, and the answer is yes. Obviously, once the snow melts, and we can't do it until the snow melts, but that's our, our plan, is to get back at it. And then, well, hopefully, we'll have enough time until it's, before it snows again, to, uh, to get them all picked up.
Yeah, because Jim said you got about half of it.
Yeah, I mean, they, they fell, last year Halloween, there was her in the Annie out, this year Halloween, there was a ton out.
Yeah, but they still are.
You know, and we only picked them up once, so, you know, we certainly, it was a little slower the first trip, because there was a ton of them out there, and once you pick them up, they're picked up, so. But we're continuing to go around, and, and we'll continue that route until we get the snow, and we can't do it anymore, and we've gotta shift everything over, so, we can't give the exact date where we're gonna be, when we're gonna be there. It's, you know, Mother Nature's kind of dictating, dictating. It's, you know, mother nature's kind of dictating, dictates everything we do, so. But we, that's our intent, just to get back out there as, as, as long as we get to, you know, warm up. It looks like next week early it's gonna warm up, so probably in the middle of the week. It looks like we might have an opportunity to get back out there. Just remind, you know, like we always do, remind people with the snow plowing. If you're looking at your house, if you put the snow on the left side of your driveway, it can't possibly get pushed into your driveway. If you pile a big pile of it right at the end of your driveway on the right side, when we have to move, when we go by and plow and when we wind, it's on our intention to push it into the driveway, but.
It doesn't work well on our driveway.
No?
No, because the neighbors driving our driveways, there's this bunch of grass in between to touch each other. So I move everything on my left, they move everything to the right because they can't go to the left and it ends up back in my circle.
And we have to turn around and go ahead from the other direction to get yours filled in, but hopefully we don't do that.
So like always battling.
It's tough, it is tough, but, you know, or maybe back farther if they keep it, you know, and, and, you know, this is such wet heavy snow. You don't want to move it more than you had to for sure. But, you know, just a reminder, if people do have the opportunity, it works better to keep it on the left side. And it's, you know, it's a simple thing, but it, you know, it's, we can't push it there if it's not there, so. But everybody was, you know, really, really good and kind of understanding in this, this snowfall. And it's, it was nice, we got things done quick and, and, you know, because, you know, down south, we'd still be closed down and everything.
Hey, the museum was happy, Apple Park was happy, yeah.
The only other thing I'll, I'll add quick is, is in the 26th of September meeting, I think we sought authorization to hire a seasonal employee at a rate of 11 per hour. That is not proven to be successful. We talked about it briefly before the meeting, we used to, you know, people, you know, you could go to McDonald's and make 1275. People used to, I know when I was a kid, I, I looked for work that would be interesting and I thought it'd be more fun or something that I would enjoy more, even if it paid a little less. Doesn't seem to be worth it for them anymore, so. Even though it's a little less to sweeten the pot, I would see if we could have authorization to hire a seasonal employee at a rate of $12 an hour. Minimum wage is going up the end of this, at the end of December to 1180 anyway. And then I think next year it's going up, it's gonna be 12. I know it's 1250, I think at the end of next year maybe. So this is really just a little, it's a little jump, about 36 bucks a week difference if we get somebody. But, you know, and we discussed before, we have one person out injured and another one having a baby really soon. And the extra hands with all the, you know, the leaves and the shovel and the sidewalks and all the things that we have to do.
A lot of increases, I imagine, next, Don's gonna hit us with some.
So, that's all, if we could, if you would entertain that resolution or that authorization to hire a seasonal or 12 dollar an hour, that would be.
I'd make that motion.
I would second.
Can I ask it?
No. Done.
Yes, sir.
Oh, Judy, you asked it, that's fine.
Trustee Lancy? Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Balke?
Aye.
Trustee Abilio?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Anything on sewer, sir?
Sewer, by the way, at the, at the last meeting, the committee, um. The sewer advisory committee, you know, presented their findings and suggestions. I just happened to be down there, I had to drop off a semi-annual report that would come to tell sewer. Earlier in the week and, and, you know, they were, they were working on their phase one stuff there and didn't have an indication at that point. When we're, when they were gonna start phase two, we're, you can go out to bid for that or for the plant, so. But I know that's something that's, you know, that's in discussions. And speaking of that, I also have been reaching out to Jeff Benway. We have a meeting tomorrow with the ready in regard to the ready commission of resiliency and economic development initiative, I think is what ready stands for. With the sandbar wells, I just wanna make sure, I, I think I've seen different things written down, but it's the sandbar wells that we're discussing, not the well, the entire well building, not all our wells. The town would be the lead agency on the project, so there's gonna have to be an agreement with the town, near municipal agreement for that, you know, for that project. And I've reached out to Jeff, it was, I think the end of, the beginning of last week. But I had fear I'm gonna see him at the meeting tomorrow, so we'll leave it signed to kind of lay things down and figure out what we have to do. As far as getting the agreement together for that project. There's, and one of the things we're trying to do too, Matt Chadfield's kind of heading up, there's, I think there's Monroe County project going on down there. There's these, you know, town western projects, the village western project, all those things, we're trying to coordinate it so we're not driving all over each other too. Kind of like when I was in house construction, you didn't want the plumber, the electrician, the heating guy, everybody held at the same spot at the same time because nothing gets done and there's a lot of angry people. Try to coordinate the efforts and what we have to do.
So I had, I had an action, I don't know, I had this meeting to reach out to the town. And I forgot to do that until today, so I did reach out today to the town and I'm just waiting a response. That was the suggestion from the committee to get both boards in the same room in a public forum. And discuss any questions or concerns, so I'll wait, I'll wait that response and then I will give that to everybody. Um, I don't, I don't think you wait because it's still gonna, it's still gonna get more than a month and we're still, we have 400 people.
Yeah.
Um, Judy, I don't think that's a bad idea.
Yeah, I think we should invite it.
But I just didn't know if that was really gonna be it.
So let's, let's see, um, if, if they, they wanna do it, I'll go from there.
I hear the area.
Yes. Good for having it done.
I have a fiscal situation with.
I challenge.
Judy, come on.
There's no why you'd be here.
She gets some ads from the local businesses.
I have a fiscal situation that I'd like to discuss with the board. Today I engaged in a conversation with Heather about the trustees of the mayor getting name tags. For, to wear when we attend events around the village.
We do have name tags.
Where are they?
I have one and I wanted Judy to have one. I don't know, it was given to me. But you have business cards.
Yeah, now the rest of us don't have business cards, now maybe we should own that business card.
Carl had them, when I had it on Candy handed out a business card.
I did.
You did?
Yeah, but seriously, yeah.
You're good, this is your parents.
Yeah, I mean, if.
Well, I, I would like to have one then, and Heather thought that I had to ask the board about how much it was gonna cost to get one.
Well, any expenditure would have to come across the board.
I originally said lanyard and, you know.
I did, I, I know I got one when I ran like a year, a couple of years back or whatever. I'm not interested in wearing a name tag.
No, I don't.
You wouldn't wear it to any events?
No, just hand up my cards.
So then you want me to order business cards?
Yeah.
Not sure, I've heard about it before, I was, he's only been on there like three months and.
Oh, you were at the same time. We were together.
Yeah.
I would like one.
You can spend the five.
You can wear one for me.
I don't, I don't know what the other ones look like, but I can find something.
I can ferment that, it's a little thing, magnets or something, goes on the magnets in the bag.
Okay. And just for one, I probably don't need approval, but I didn't know if he wanted everybody to have one, which would, I would.
That's what I was asking, I, I thought.
Well, why not?
Why not, we should have what may our, our board was a little bit more well-known than what we are. You see people on the street, they don't know. It's true, Judy.
All right.
That's okay, Carol, he's on the board.
But business cards would be wonderful.
All right, well.
If you want those, I will need a resolution for that. One, I don't, but.
They come in a box of like 250 or something. Well, can't you split the 250 in between all the peoples, it all can be one day?
No, it's gotta be one.
Would you like mine?
Would you want me to do a cross off of your name and put in?
Seriously.
Those ever, those ever terms are up first, you only get half as many as the one. Because who knows if you're gonna be back and use them up?
That's us, that's us, and he's got the box at 250.
Al gets the most and.
Alan, Judy.
Jude, they get the most.
Very nice.
No, shit, I'm the oldest, I probably shouldn't.
That's true, you gotta be on it long enough that you. All right, Heather, you didn't have anything, right? All right, so next meeting is, village board meeting is November 26th, that is a Tuesday. And village board workshop, December 3rd is canceled.
Yes.
It's canceled and we will meet again on the 12th of December with a full agenda.
And you will let us know when you hear from the town, right?
Yes, I'll let you know here from the town. And yes, our meeting, our workshops were, was determined last meeting to go every other month. Unless we have a special situation, Tom. All right, thanks for the energy tonight and thanks for coming. Right, and I'm calling the village meeting.
Nice to see you, Al.
Close, it's 8:02. All in favor?
Aye.
That was the strangest thing, I couldn't view the screens.